Okay, great. Good evening. Welcome to the March 25th, 2025 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And as usual, I'm going to open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So we usually start this with announcements. We do have, I just had one small, did you think of something? You looked at me like maybe a light bulb went off. So I just wanted to make sure people know it's open burning season. So of course, a permit is required. And so you'd need to reach out to the fire department to get a permit. And then you also have to get permission to burn, find out if it's a burning day. So just wanted to remind people of that. So this public survey from the opioid settlement funds task force. Andrew, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll touch on that quickly. We have an opioid settlement funds task force that's been meeting six members. This is to decide how to use the funds that the town is receiving through the opioid settlement. There's a number of state approved uses for it. So a number of things we could do. And this group is charged with making recommendations to the Select Board on how to use those funds. They have created a public survey that will launch this week, most likely tomorrow. It'll be found on the town's website. We'll also be sharing it however we can. It'll be shared in a flyer through schools and other places. We'll share it with COA and some other folks to get some public outreach and some public ideas on how to use these funds and get people's ideas on what they think would be useful and what the best strategies might be to help use these funds. So looking forward to launching that. It's put together very carefully and thoughtfully by this task force. And we're looking forward to this being the first action of the group and moving on from there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any, nothing?
Just go to the website and do the survey.
Yeah, great. Way in, it's important. Is anyone here for public forum?
Good evening. This evening, I wish to bring before you and the townspeople three items. The first is, I attended the Housing Authority meeting on March 18th, and I am happy to report that it was by far the most productive and amicable meeting in the entire over four years I have served on this board. So I apologize to Diana Seizdahl for stating at the March 11th hearing that I said I felt it was the, I was the only commissioner on the authority who cared about the residents of Kapewak. Now, based on her actions, I can say there are now two commissioners that do, and I'm optimistic that our newest commissioner, Susan Seizdahl, will hopefully make it three. Here is a short list of some of the things we accomplished at this meeting. The crossing signal between Kapewak and Town Hall now works properly. The ongoing sewage backing up into apartments has been temporarily addressed in one building. However, the plumbing design for Kapewak remains flawed, yet I am hopeful it will be remedied in the near future. We approved a grant to upgrade all Kapewak lighting with LEDs and add kitchen ventilation, replace aged-out hot water heaters with modern heat pump-assisted new, much more efficient ones. Diana wondered about looking at solar electricity for Kapewak. Now perhaps this is something we can discuss in the future. But the best announcement was saved for last when our executive director, LePierre, announced she had secured grant funding of $200,000 to upgrade all Kapewak buildings' insulation and air sealing, which is another item I had long been an advocate for, and we finally voted to approve. The second item is that I will not be filing nomination papers for either Housing Authority or Select Board in the May election. As many of you know, I didn't run for the Housing Authority in 2020 and that I was a write-in candidate by townspeople who thought perhaps I could bring improvement to Hatfield's only affordable elderly housing. Despite relentless difficulties, I was able to prevail in getting approval for a 100% grant for an emergency electrical generator and add recycling to the waste removal service. As a fellow elder, I was able to advocate for Kapewak residents and encourage them to start a local tenants' organization. While time is short, I would further encourage a Kapewak resident to file nomination papers, which requires only 20 signatures, so they could be on the town ballot for the Housing Authority, or consider a write-in candidacy for the upcoming May election. The third item is I received a notice from the Select Board that they plan to have a hearing on April 2nd to remove me from the Housing Authority. This is less than two months to the end of my term. I ask that this hearing be held in open session, and I submit this request in writing this evening, March 25th. One of my heroes is John Lewis, who coined the wonderful description of his activism as causing good trouble. So I want to thank so many of our community, in our community, who have reached out to me, along with many, with grateful hugs, and urging, and urging me to continue in public office. I ask that our public media record this hearing and broadcast it live. I ask that you join me at this hearing on April 2nd at 7:00 PM to make more good trouble, and together we can improve the lives of our elderly residents at Kapewak Housing. Thank you. And the request for the open session is here.
Thank you. The only, the only correction I would make is there's, everyone on the Housing Authority over there, including Alex Malinowski and Judy Schelf, care very much about the residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else here for public forum? Oh, John, come on up.
Just like to recognize John Pease, just like to recognize Ajorski, my fellow classmate, for contacting Tom Tataro at the American Legion Post 344, and I guess submitting the town to become a Purple Heart community. Am I correct?
It's a process.
And I was proud to attend Hadley's ceremony last year, I think in early August. It's, I guess, the anniversary date that, but it's a moving ceremony, and we should honor our veterans because, you know, they provided a lot for us. Again, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed, for that and for everything you do for Hatfield veterans and making sure we're, they're always top of mind for us.
It's a group effort. There's a lot of people that do a lot of work in town, and there's been a lot of people in the past that have done a lot of work in town. So it's just not one person I, it's, it's always been, there's no I in team, right, Mr. Care?
Well, we, we thank all of them, but we thank you especially because you're sitting here with us tonight. So thank you. Thank you, Ed, and thanks, John, for bringing that up. Okay, that's it for public forum. So because we do have a number of residents here for topic two, we're actually going to skip over topic one, just to be respectful of your time. And even though I know these are thrilling meetings, we're not going to make you sit through other things. So if any, perhaps our representatives from Gilaheur and CEI would like to come up to the microphone. So, you know, the, the purpose of tonight's meeting really is to get an update from you for our sake, mostly for the residents' sake. You know, spring is coming, so we all know that things will be starting up out there. I'm sure they have a lot of questions. I have, I have some questions of my own, and I also have two that were emailed to me by the Long Streets that I want to make sure we do ask. But if you, I'd like to just give you an opportunity to speak, if that's what you'd like to do, because maybe what you're going to say will answer some of our questions before we even have to ask.
I'll go first. I'm going to basically just touch on schedule. So there's a DOT project that started last year that was not able to finish due to the area we're working, but they are coming back to work in the section. I think between you, it'll be Chestnut and Lynnseed, I think, is the section they're work, they're going to need to finish or they're working on. They're coming back April 14th, so we are planning to come back. Our permit allows us out on the road April 1st, between the 2nd and the 3rd of April to do some initial work. And then we will be doing full-depth paving on the main lane, the southbound lane. It's set up for 9th and 10th of April. So we're going to do the paving restoration and all that, get out of the road to allow them to do their work. The one thing I don't have is how long their duration is. I don't have the information on that schedule, but I'm going to guess it's probably three weeks for them to do that section. And we just, I have to work with them and schedule and coordination as far as doing some loaming seeding and restoration, but I'm going to do, once they come in, I might not, there's a really good chance, might be certain days, that I can't work because of the traffic pattern with them. So I might have to let them do their structures, do their paving, do their striping, and then I come in and do the loaming and seeding and cleanup. And then lastly would be the, the laydown area would follow suit after that. And Michael and I spoke to, to be safe, we should be cleaned up and seeded back to normal prior to Memorial Day.
That's the, the work area that's behind the homes?
Yeah, the behind 43, 53 or 47, is it?
So, so the cleanup and restoration of, you called it the laydown area?
Yeah, correct. That'll be the last thing. So after Warner Brothers is gone, we're loamed and seeded, we're going to clean that area.
And you, you said May 15th?
Yeah, our, our plan is to have it, the loam back and have it seeded, you know, by Memorial Day weekend, which is the end of?
Oh, okay.
So is there any piping that's still left that has to be done?
There is one piece that just recently came up. So all of the mainline sewer and the associated laterals for the individual properties were put in. Those are all complete. Brockway Smith recently changed management or had a change in management. And previously, we had the ability for them to sleeve a sewer force main from their property on Chestnut over, through the abandoned water mains, and then essentially be able to discharge into the new sewer on West Street. The previous management team had decided not to pursue that. So we had not completed that, which was decided to set that aside and not spend money on a connection that wasn't going to be used. The new management team now wants to do that. So this just came to light in the past couple of weeks. We're jumping on it. It's going to get done as part of this first initial remobilization at the beginning of April, so that, that cross trench right in that area, which it will require, is going to end up getting flowable fill, which is a Mass DOT requirement.
Is this on Chestnut Street or does it cross?
It crosses diagonally from their property on Chestnut Street, almost going due west.
There's the old barn, the numbers is where, down the house is the, so the White House, past USA heading south, there's that old barn across the street.
Yeah.
There's, we installed the sewer manhole into the old water main. So we had the location in that, so in theory, they could sleeve to that, but there's no, last year when we installed, we had asked, because there was a drawing about doing a connection, and I'm like, are we doing this or we not? And Michael had reached out with them, and they said, no, we're not interested. So we didn't put that in. So now we're going to go up after this and look in the field and see what's the best option to get their sewer across the street into the, into the grabby, because it's on the opposite lane.
So besides Brockway's connection, is there any other connections at the pumping station? At the pumping station, then, when will that, the electrical and that be all completed? Because I know wires are still hanging from the pole. I don't know if it's been tested. And the other question would be, has any of the line been tested and where are we at?
That was one of my questions, too.
Yes, I'm happy to report that the entire gravity line was tested and is deemed acceptable at this point. The contractor, we also, I think, back in the fall, had identified issues with the electrical subcontractor and the permanent control panel and such for the pump station. So we were pushing them to get the pump station, just, you got to get it online as soon as possible, because some of the delivery dates for equipment that they were talking about electrically were like now and later into the spring. And we're like, we just can't wait. They, several weeks ago, got everything set with the temporary, essentially a temporary electrical service and temporary electrical controls. We did test and start up the pump station, the equipment, so that all passed. The one thing, and it's just kind of overlapping schedules right now, coincidentally, the electrical subcontractor did receive the last piece of equipment that he was waiting for. So he is in a position to install the permanent electrical enclosure, the permanent electrical service. The local electrical inspector has checked it out, and it is just waiting on Eversource to run the permanent underground electrical service to that panel. So if everything goes well at this point, that should be done and running by the end of April, to, to the point where I'd be saying people could start contacting contractors for the, whatever work is required on their property. And as part of that, we can work with the town to figure out how best to get the information to residents, to each of the property owners, on where that connection point is for that, for their property.
Okay, so, and then that, once that pump station is all actually functioning, all that fencing and everything can come down?
Correct. Fencing's gone.
Oh, it's gone now?
No.
I was going to say, I would drive by it every day, I thought it was still there.
No, just because of the temp electric.
Right.
Yeah, leave, yeah, leave that up. So we're, it's basically in the hands of Eversource to get, get the permanent meter in, and, but everything functions as it should, and it's, it's a plug-and-play item, basically.
So Ed did, sorry.
Well, so since you're just waiting on the Brockway piece, people could still, when you're ready, when you say end of April, possibly tie in to the sewer and use the sewer at that time, correct?
Correct. And the Brockway connection is going to be done because that is in the section that's going to be final paved through Gilaheur's contract and through Mass DOT for the other, so we don't want any disruption of the pavement, pavement once that's done.
So Ed actually asked two of my questions, so thanks for that. But I was curious about the cross trenches, but I'm assuming that's all going to, because some of them are, you know, really, it's not a pleasant ride out there. That'll be part of the DOT.
They're temporary, so everything that you feel is a temporary patch, and some have been there for a couple of years because of the full depth. So those are all, that's like the first thing that, well, the Brockway and the, and those cross trenches heading north are getting addressed with first, and then we're going to jump over to do the full, full depth.
And I mean, so right now, you're anticipating completion by at least the end of May? Is that what I'm hearing? And so the pile and stuff that's at the Long Streets behind their property, your site there, when will, and at that same time, that will be brought back to its original condition?
Correct.
By the end of May, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just.
So by the end of May, the project should be completed, the pipe should be in, you should have the Brockway piece, the landscaping should be done, and everything should be cleaned up.
It's, it's a timing, originally, the DOT, I think they were going to go out in May, so we were trying to go, you know, and this was all going on through the winter, but their schedule, the paving contractor's schedule moved. So I got caught wind of this about a week ago, that they pushed it up. So what it's going to be is we do all the roadwork, do everything that we can, we have to kind of get out of the road, let them do what they have to do, and then we have to go back, instead of me being able to do my roadwork, clean up the, you know, the laydown area, because there again, with them doing all the work, getting in and out of the laydown area, it might be.
And you're going to be starting the roadwork pretty soon, so they can do the paving, right?
Yeah, April 2nd or April 3rd, because the permit allows me April 1st, correct?
So one of, I, we did get an email from the Long Streets, and I just want to make sure that, so I understand you'll be cleaning up back there, but you know, he mentions a lot in here about, you know, sort of the wind and the soils being blown around. Will that be seeded it to avoid that? Okay, so.
We stripped the loam off, it's in the back in a pile, that's one of the piles you see. So we clean up, we need to use that staging area once we do the paving aspect. And then once that's cleaned up, the loam, we're going to subgrade that, the loam will get spread back down, and we're going to reseed it.
Okay. And then, you know, he, he further asks, when will the contractor restore our front lawns to the condition they were prior to the beginning of the project? I had decent enough topsoil, have a suitable green lawn right up to the road. Now there is various rocks, construction debris, et cetera, that I would hate to see them just cover over with soil. Will they be removing this debris before they lay down the fresh topsoil?
Can I, I just want a second on that, because a year ago, or whenever seed was thrown down on my, the front of my lawn, but it wasn't raked in, it wasn't, like, it needs to be raked, it needs to be hydroseeded and stuff, because whatever was thrown down, nothing has, it's a mess.
No, that'll be corrected, yes. That's, that's going to happen, like I said, I don't know the paving schedule, but I would guess it's going to be, you know, in sometime early to mid-May. So there's about a week's worth of restoration to, to get that squared away.
So you're saying that they would, that those, those front lawns, that sort of?
Yeah, we need to, right. When we paved and we cleaned up for the winter, we just pulled some of the soil and the material that's there, yeah, so that needs to be removed and loam installed, correct?
Okay, so.
Because if I put, if I put loam on, it would be too high.
And you'll be doing the whole root again? Like the seed that was thrown down on my lawn last year, it's not like, okay, now you've done with 35?
What, what house are you at?
The green, 35 West Street?
We had your driveways to the left, correct? Of the house?
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, you're from, starting at your driveway and your neighbor's driveway, we, we got to restore and head, head north, yeah, so that gets completely redone.
Are there any, are there any, anybody here that's south of that that feels they're not properly restored?
I'm at 29, which is the first residential house right across from Waxwing, and granted, we moved in when all of this was started, so I don't have no idea what the front looked like before. There is a bunch of debris, and there's signs down there, too, from a bunch of the construction, so I don't know what will be done there, how much of it was from this project versus.
Yeah, I would, I would just ask you to take a look at the length of the entire project and make sure that things are done properly. Yeah, I'm going to just, I'm sorry, I'm just going to, I just want to make sure that they're done, sort of, you're done with your presentation, did you?
Other than just one clarification, so people are aware of how this paving is being done. So Gilaheur Construction is responsible for essentially restoring the full width of the southbound lane under their contract, because that was the area that was disturbed for putting in the sewer and the water. The state, Mass DOT, as part of their normal road restoration program, is and already had planned to do the northbound lane. Gilaheur Construction is using the same paving contractor, just to make everything easier all around. So just so you're aware, it's not all being done under this contract, but it will all happen at the same time by the same paving contractor.
A very reputable paving contractor. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, but.
No, I thank you for letting me ask a question at the end of this, and that is that last year at the end of the paving, and I don't know what happened, we don't have any idea, someone came in and started digging up the road in front of our house and the driveway again, and our front lawn, and there was no explanation. And I would like to know what happened then? And is there, and then it was repaved, like, I think, the third, fourth time? What was it? Why did you do it? And are you, is there any reason you do it again? And I'll tell you why, because when you packed up, it was right near the end of the season, you packed up and pulled away. We had such an overrun of mice in our house, that it was incredible. And I'm not kidding you, we had 13 in the first week, and we had to completely, yeah, I mean, it was terrible. So I don't know what you were doing or why you did it. Would you please inform us? Come up and knock on the door, dial the phone, just tell us what you're doing and why you're doing it, when you just show up. And I don't know what you were doing, and so I can't say, but you were, you were out there unscabbing the road and in the front of our tree belt again, and onto our front lawn.
Can you tell him what number and what house you are?
37, West. I know, I'm sorry to say, but yes, 37.
I can speak to, we, so we run the mainline, and then we fall back, and we were connecting laterals, but what we had done is, since we had gotten so far north running the mainline, we had fallen back and started the laterals from the north and worked in the opposite direction. So that's why we were gone and then had to come back. And I think we had an issue, there's somewhere in that area, I know we had to, we had an issue locating one of the, where one of the laterals was, so that might have been the reason why we were there for two days to dig that up, but.
Would there be a reason that mice were somehow?
I can't speak, I have mice in my house and every machine on that job.
Oh, vibration?
There's mice, I don't know.
And they weren't done, and we had the mice over and several other things.
I found six in one of the machines that ate some wires, and we had to have them come out, and we had to wire it back together. There's a lot of mice in that backfield.
Wow. Okay. So I'm assuming that there may be a number of other of you who have questions or concerns, feel, you know, just, sure.
I just have a few, I'm 54, West Street, 58, I'm sorry, 58, so sorry. So close. 58 West Street. I just have the question, the repaving will also include into the driveway that was done? Okay.
Correct.
And then, there's a white pipe sticking out, and that was included later, and I don't know what the, it sticks right out of the lawn in the front, and I'm just wondering if you could tell me if there was some kind of issue that required that or what that?
It would have been from the dewatering system, or one of the original monitoring wells is what it would have been. So if it was a monitoring well, that's why it would have got left there, so.
It wasn't there while the water was being pumped out? After all of the equipment was removed, about a week or two later, someone came and placed that pipe out. At first, it was sticking out about four or five feet, and then someone cut it down to about a foot. And it's been like that, about a foot sticking out of the ground since you guys ended.
What, house number 54?
58.
I'll have to look into that, I can't, I can't give a definitive answer.
Okay. Because I didn't know if there was something we needed to know about. And then my only final question is, we did receive notice about free hookup for the West Street? And I was just wondering when we would expect maybe that to start taking place, or how we would go about making contact for that request?
Well, so, I mean, once you're able to hook up, you would need to have your contractor take, you know, you have to pay the contractor to do, to do the work, but it's the, the sort of going live, actually hook, actually using the sewer system is, is what's free.
Yeah, they're not paying for the actual.
We have two years.
Oh, my glory.
What's the serial numbers on the bills?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much. That's a new one.
That letter also said we have two.
This is not mine.
Oh, it's not yours?
We have, we have two years from the date the project is done to have that initial, that part.
Right, so.
That's correct, that's what we voted for, so we're waiting to get completion, the actual completion date, and we'll go from there for two years to hookup, so you don't have to pay the hookup fee to the town, but you're still responsible for your house to, to do the hookup.
And that's the kind of thing there, it's good if we all got together and went with the same contractor, because we'd get a better deal if we.
Presumably.
It's very possible, but some contractors I talked to said, each house might be a little bit different because of the code, so some, some plumbing may have to be brought up to code, so I'm not sure if they can give each, you know, person an exact, the same cost, it might be, you know, per foot outside or something, I'm not sure, but I'm sure if you get the same contractor, you might be able to negotiate some, some lower pricing, which is possible, but, but don't expect the same price for each residence, because each one might have to be reviewed, and they have to look at the plumbing, and they have to determine if that plumbing has to be brought up to code, and so those might be some of the issues.
And that's why we wanted to give two years, because, you know, depending on the situation at your house, it could be costly, so we understand people might need a little bit of time to be able to afford to do that.
I'm just wondering what the warranty or guarantee is on this project, that the system is gonna operate without any issues, because, you know, having had a front row seat to the project for four years, a lot of people are very skeptical, myself included, about tying into this project, and then having some disaster happen, and having sewage flooding into my basement. So I really, I mean, what guarantees do we have that this system's gonna work properly? And if it doesn't, what's, what's gonna happen? Is, you know, responsible? We go to.
So I can answer that, the construction contract has a very industry-standard, one-year contractor's warranty on the entire project, from the date of final acceptance. So, we are approaching that point, and that covers everything.
Already? We're approaching that point?
No, no, we're approaching the start of that one year.
Oh.
Yeah, we haven't started it, no worry, no problem. And then, just to allay some of those concerns, this sewer pump station, which is, you don't see any of it, because most of it's underground, it has two separate pumps in it, and one of those is a dedicated standby pump. So if there is a mechanical problem with one of the pumps, it will automatically switch to the other pump. There is also instrumentation in that station, based, monitoring the sewage levels in that wet well below grade, and those levels control the pumps starting and stopping, but they also will give alarms to the wastewater operators. If it reaches a point which is way below where it's going to be a physical problem, it will be an early indication of something's not working right, because it should never hit that alarm. And then if it goes beyond that, it's, there's a secondary alarm, the fallback, if both pumps should fail, is the wastewater department would end up setting up a temporary pump above grade, and essentially have to bypass that pump station right there at that location. That would all be well before any sewage is backing up into anybody's house.
Are there backflow preventers put in also, so it can only go out of the house?
There are not, and those do not typically get used, because they're, they create, can create their own problems. Those devices generally only get used where they're really, you know, the gravity sewer portion is pretty shallow, so it wouldn't take much for it to back up into, say, a basement. This gravity sewer, and part of the problem for the, you know, the long process of getting it installed, was because the gravity portion is very deep, it's 20 feet down. So, that is, there is a substantial volume in that pipe, the gravity sewer itself, a substantial volume in that wet well itself, that it would have to be a very serious backup, that somebody was ignoring, before anything happened into a, into a basement.
Could flooding affect that, in that region? It goes flooding, or is it with flash floods or whatever?
They would have to submerge that pump station, which I think there's gonna be a lot of other concerns.
If, if something did happen to the system on the 385th day, so the homeowner is responsible, even if it was something that goes back to the.
Well, once it gets passed the contractor's warranty period, it then becomes, you're now in a situation that's no different than any other existing sewer customer in town, where if something happens, what happened, and why, and who's responsible, those are all very case-specific things.
So, basically, the homeowner is responsible for paying whatever happens, I mean, they're not gonna have.
If there was a sewage backup?
Well, if anything happened that was, was due to a malfunction in the system.
Beyond that first year? Well, that system is still, at that point, the system is the town's system. So, if I, if something happened, and it was because this, there's, I don't want to get into the legal issues, because I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but that's the realm it would be into, which is no different than any other existing sewer customer in town.
And, I mean, there's various things that can cause backups, that also have nothing to do with the system, you know, roots, the wrong things going down, you know.
Yeah, you won't have to worry about roots, except possibly in the laterals, which is shallow, because the main line is extr, it's 20 feet down, versus there are other, you know, a lot of other sewers, they'll be right at that six feet, you know, so that's the realm where it doesn't take much for roots to plug it up over 10 years or whatever, and it backs up into people's basements, but that's not the case here with this main.
Once it leaves your property, it's a town's problem to take care of.
Alan, that's the 47 West Street, when they first started this project, did they know Brockway Smith was gonna tap this here? At first, they were with the sewer there, because that's gonna be a lot of more sewage going into that pipe there.
Oh, the sewer main, and the pump station, did account for that, because the original plans included provisions for them to connect, and it was only after we were under construction that Brockway Smith said, nah, we don't want to do that.
And this, this whole project was designed to, you know, increase capacity for some development on 5 and 10, so there's capacity in the pipes, beyond what's just existing right now.
Correct.
When they do the lawns over, in my house, it just rocks and everything, blacktop chunks in there, they're gonna have to dig down at least six inches to get all that stuff out of there, just can't put the loom on top of it, they're gonna go down at least six, eight inches and dig everything out.
Yeah, we, we were talking about that a few minutes ago, and Mr. Gilaher assures us that, that that will be removed, and it'll be, you know, restored appropriately.
I'll be out there watching. Seen enough stuff going on, and you, you wouldn't know what's going on here.
One up, and this may not have anything to do with this project, but I've noticed all this work going on in the wastewater treatment plant, does that have anything to do with this project? Okay.
That's a separate project, the upgrades and improvements is a separate contract, separate contractors, and it's all separate, yeah.
Got my answer.
Anybody else? So it feels like the end is in sight.
Yes.
And, you know, I just personally wanna. No, that's not true, but I do, I do wanna just, again, sort of thank and recognize all of you for the patience that this has taken, to, you know, to live through this, so I know it wasn't easy, and hopefully this will be a much more peaceful summer for you. Anything else?
No, I, I'm, I'm happy we're finally at the end, and I know it's been, it's been a long process, and we did come across a problem with the water, and fortunately, we were able to go back to the state and get enough, get some more funding to, to fix that, without having to go back to the taxpayers, and so instead of the money going to Boston, it came to us, so I think that was a good thing. So, I mean, we would have, otherwise, we would have had to ask the town to pay for the rest of that, so we didn't, so I mean.
Did you have anything, Greg?
No, no, yeah, I, I've been out there many days, I know it's really loud out there. I'm out there a lot, so I, I know how you guys feel, I don't know how you lived out there through it all, but, thank you, and hopefully it's over.
And I, I know I haven't always been the nicest guy with you guys with my emails, but I've always had concerns, but I'm glad that we're finally getting near the end of this project, and, and I hope we can finally get completion at the end of May, so.
It would be nice if we got quick emails, you know, there's, there's a few sort of junctures here of, you know, next week you're doing some things, and just to make sure we're staying on track, I mean, obviously, we could have weather this time of year that might delay things a little bit, so just maybe keep us posted if we're sticking to the schedule roughly.
And I'll coordinate with, with you, Ann.
We factored in a couple of days in those dates with the paving due to that, so in case we, hopefully we don't, but in case we do, we can still get it done within that, like, April 14th date.
You had one more question?
I just have a question about if, if we would be notified timelines with the paving, because like, there was a couple of times of paving, like, I couldn't get onto my driveway because it was blocked because of the paving, so I was just wondering if, if somehow it could be shared, like, if there's an, like, a portion of the section on West Street, like, if they're doing, like, northbound tap, just like, when we might not be able to access?
Well, typically on a project like that, wouldn't Mass DOT put out a message board?
They do, but the, the issue, we've gotta go seven and a half inches deep, and Mass DOT is typically two or two and a half, so once we cut that out in front of the driveway, you know, we have to go in and do the preparation, it's a timing thing, get that cut down, and then get the paving contractor in behind us at 10, 11 o'clock, to get the four inches of black base, and then the inch and a half of the next course in, based on, with the temperature, and then allow it to cool before we put traffic, I mean, we can get cars in out of the driveway, but putting traffic back on that lane, so I'm working with the paving contractor exactly if we're starting in the south or the north, or how this logistically is gonna be done, we're doing it, and what chunks we're doing it, and which days, so we can, I can let the engineering firm know where we're gonna start, and these are, you know, you're gonna be affected, because until it's, it's paved, there's definitely gonna be some people affected, because once we cut that out, seven and a half, eight inches, you know, to drive back out the other side, so.
Well, as soon as you know a definite date, maybe give it to Andrew, till he can, or catch us, so we can get the resident, get it up on the board.
We come in initially, do the cross trenches and all that, that's isolated, so that's not really gonna affect anyone, but it's when we do the full depth, I know we ran into that problem before, we notify people, and then we excavate it out to the full depth, and 9:30 comes and they want to leave, but.
But now that things are gonna pick up again in terms of actual onsite activities, I can send a weekly update on Friday to Andrew.
That'd be great.
And then it can get posted, and people know what's coming the next week.
Exactly.
Ask one question of the gentleman, while they're still here, who is the point person on the DPW with you now? Who is, is, is the Hatfield point person?
I have been interacting with Tony Listowski, and part of it was the staging area cleanup, where all the materials have been stockpiled, that's essentially, one of the well sites is further back, so he's always had his own concerns in terms of the restoration of that area.
So is, is that the acting DPW director?
We, no, we don't have an acting DPW director right now.
He's our water, water superintendent.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was just wondering.
And then separately, we'll be interacting with the wastewater operators, so that as we start up the pump station, that they get trained on exactly what's there, all the communication set up for the alarms, and they go to those individuals.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can we just confirm, I know we've talked about this a little bit, and had to just go back and check numbers, but we're looking good to stay within the budget for this project right now?
I'll have to coordinate with you separately on that, but I.
Oh, we better be.
Yes.
Okay.
I start up my bad emails again.
Yeah, I, I don't even want to think about that.
Yeah, we don't have a source.
Okay, does everybody feel like they had a chance to ask what they needed to ask, or say what they needed to say? Thanks for coming down, it's appreciated.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
That was great.
Thank you.
You know, getting back to the agenda, I skipped right over the consent agenda, sorry, I was, so I, I think we should take up the consent agenda.
I just want to add one thing, no final payment until we know for sure, everything has been completed to our satisfaction.
I agree.
Amen.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I do, I would do want to take up the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 11th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Um, sure.
No, I, I'll call you, it's all right.
Oh, you have my number, right?
Yeah, it's kind of roundabout this, but not exactly, but thank you.
Okay, sure, call me tomorrow, call me tomorrow.
Minutes.
Consent agenda, minutes. Did you make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion to accept.
Okay, did you second it?
You made a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
A motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Karen. Okay, so we're gonna backtrack now to top, topic one, which was the authorized weapons policy for the police department, now that you said the, the police are not able to come tonight to discuss this?
Yes, I, I thought they would be coming, but I guess something came up, so if they're not here this evening, I'll give you a little bit of context, and then if there's anything that we need to follow up on, we can certainly do that. So the, the context is that the police are going over their policies and procedures right now, they're updating all of them, so they have a big book full of, of policies, procedures, lots of different things, they will all come before the select, but this one piece of it, the authorized weapons policy, it's a part of their policy procedures, and they have new weaponry that will be coming in shortly, and they needed to, to have this authorized sooner, but before any changes are made in their, their firearms, they needed this policy approved, so it's before you for your approval, their plan is to make it effective on April 4th of this year, this follows most of the, the similar policies that have been done by, by other police organizations across the state, very similar to what's happening in, in other municipalities, but personalized for Hatfield, the pieces that are the most personalized for the Hatfield Police Department are the appendices, which describes which weapons they, they actually have, and what they're using, so, and that's required in any of these policies to say, you know, what it is that, that folks are using, so that's a broad outline, I've read through it, the police put a good amount of work into this, and, you know, I asked them, you know, with the amount of regulations in here, there's so many things that it requires, are you actually doing all this? And they can say, yes, we are, that, this is taken extremely seriously, everything about certification of, of weapons, of, of staff who, who need to be certified, everything else, all that is happening and will continue to happen, based on how these policies are written, so that's, that's what I'll say for context.
So basically, these policies to update and become more standard with other departments in the area.
Yeah, and there's been changes in, in, you know, police requirements through post, through other things, through the state. through other things, through the state. This would comply with that. And it also is updated for, you know, the actual weaponry that they use.
I mean, it seems like an important enough procedure that they would have been here. Is there a reason they didn't come?
Uh, do we know anything about? Okay. I do not. I don't know why they're not here.
I guess I had some questions about, you know, it, it refers to on or off duty use quite a bit through here. So like what, why would there be off duty use of?
Yeah. My, my reading of it was that it provided for a scenario in, in which an off duty officer could have a weapon on them. I, I don't think it's requiring that by any means. I think it's just a, you need to have a policy of what it looks like if, if a officer is off duty and for whatever reason is carrying a weapon. So that's, that's how I interpret it. But that's a, it's a good question for the police.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess I was just curious about.
Well, I mean, we could approve this and then have them come to a meeting and answer any questions you have on the existing bylaws or unless you feel it's more appropriate to wait and then ask the question. But these, these policies are basically what you're going to see in other departments anyways. So.
Is that true? This is mostly just boilerplate stuff with our, our specific weapons listed in the back?
That's correct. And vastly adapted from what other departments are doing.
Okay. I guess I just, so we can have off duty officers that are carrying Hatfield issued weapons?
I don't know if it said Hatfield issued weapons. Let's see.
This is, um, this is authorized weapons and ammunition.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Personnel authorized to be armed with a firearm or other weapon, on or off duty shall carry only those weapons and ammunition issued by this agency or authorized by the chief of police.
I'm looking to see in the policy what it says is authorized for off duty use. I'm not sure I see anything.
Firearms and ammunition authorized for both on and off duty use by members of this department are set forth in appendix A.
Mm-hmm. And I don't see any weapons that are authorized for off duty use in the appendix. So I think that that language is there. If something were to change and they allowed for on duty, for off duty use, it could be added. I don't see anything in the appendix that would signal allowed for off duty use.
Right. So it does say, okay. So just to be clear, firearms and ammunition authorized for off duty use only by mem, off duty use only by members of this department are set forth in appendix B, which is completely.
Blank.
Blank. Okay. Okay.
So I see no weaponry. That's.
Yes. Okay.
Allowed for off duty.
I just wanted to get some clarification on that. But if there's going to be further policies that they're updating, I think they should be present to discuss them. Okay. I'm fine with that. If you guys are fine with that. Did you have any questions?
No, I, I spoke to the chief about this and pretty much everything Andrew said was accurate. All the many police departments around here have the same exact one. They just changed the town name.
Okay. Then I guess we need to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hatfield Police Department authorized weapons policy effective April 4th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Topic three, Mr. Pease, did you want to come forward? So John is joining us tonight as a member of the agricultural advisory board, I assume, with concerns agriculture-related water issues in West Hatfield well staging area.
Yes. In conjunction with the egg commission, just like to bring up like a community service announcement. Our board is down one member and we just like to, you know, acquire another member, but there's other boards and commissions that are down. We had a, I'm on a community preservation committee and we had a couple of members that were out because of work or childcare. And at the end of the meeting, I brought up the question of if we have a student, seniors graduating that need credit to graduate with community service, would be ideal time to provide babysitting for our committee members if they so, you know, choose to. I know it's a touchy subject, but it could be something that could be brought up to get more members of our community to involve in committees and, 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 you know, community work. If this babysitting or, you know, community service for our seniors, even brought the idea up to our council on aging director about real seniors that could.
Are you pointing at me, Mr. Pease?
I'm pointing at me.
Yes.
Hey.
But, but the community across the street, you know, could be very helpful in mentoring, you know, young people. And you could get, you know, family members to do committee work and provide, you know, their, the ability to govern their community, you know. It's a lot of it's in the.
So I, I got you, but that, that wouldn't really be an issue for the select board. But, um, so I'm just curious. You, this says agriculture-related water issues in West Hatfield well lot staging area.
I think the contractors talked about returning the field back to what it was originally. And that's what it, it should be, you know, for the long streets and the other neighbors in the area, return it back. So a farmer could use it again.
Right. Yeah.
They talked with a farmer that was maintaining the field for the town and he said it's a, you know, productive field and it should be returned back to it, you know?
Well, I'm, I, I feel like we got some assurance tonight that that, that will happen. I think it's important to realize.
Yeah.
Some people out there had their, you know, front lawns involved and some had their front and their back lawns involved. So.
And, and the water issue that I think the board brought up to us to look at of a situation that involved one of our committee members, Betsy Speeder. I brought the attention to our director at that time, DPW director, Phil at DPW garage. I told him about a meeting that we were going to have. I think it was maybe in December. And I says that, you know, come bring Tony, the water superintendent, because we have some questions to ask. No one showed up at the meeting. So now that issue is like at your table because we have some questions and only way you can answer the question is to maybe Tony being the water superintendent or who else, you know, with the DPW to answer Betsy's questions and some of our questions on that matter. Third one is in similar construction that might be going on with the day pond reconstruction and dredging and all that, the staging area. I think it's 69 Main Street, the property. The owner was saying that there's going to be equipment being staged and digging out.
That's all been changed, John. We're going in through the school.
School. Okay.
And it's going to be on the school side.
School side.
We, the committee has decided that there's just too many issues with the existing owners. So it's, there's already a proposal to go from the school, stay on the school side and do the dredging.
That is a good reminder. I do need to follow up the day pond waters since we had a, a meeting with them. They were very helpful, at least.
The owner was concerned about returning the property back to its original, you know, grass field. And I think somebody was mentioned throwing down some rice seed or something like that. So that was a concern.
Well, that owner was present at our last meeting. So we're aware of it and, and we're aware the other owners did come to the meeting and we've made changes in the plan. So now it'll be the school, school side and everything will be stored on the school side on property land.
Sounds good.
And then we moved afterwards.
And it's a worthy project. The right to farm community signs are being worked on and hopefully they'll be up in a short time. We have a local ag business that will probably be providing them for us. So it's like a work in progress on that. So again, thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Very much.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate it. Okay. Topic four, Julie, come on up.
So this is not my money.
That there's a receipt there though?
Yeah. So I'm looking to see if I have what I bought it.
Well, we'll hang on to it in case anybody, yeah. That was nice. So Julie is, Julie is here to talk about pickleball courts again.
That's all I talk about. So I'm Julie Pokel. I'm at 31 King Street. I got a call from John Pease who said that he and John Wilkes have been talking about the 11 acres that Hatfield has acquired in relationship to the bike path from North Hampton. And I thought that that might be a feasible place for the tennis pickleball courts. And I contacted.
The Down Elm Court land?
Yeah. So I contacted Andrew and he said that I should start by checking in with you to see if that's worth exploring.
I thought it was worthwhile to at least, you know, start the conversation on just what are we doing with the rest of that Elm Court land? I think there's, there's plenty of options and certainly we're already on the way towards this DPW property that, that's there and that we're working on. But it's probably worth just checking in the fact that this pickleball courts, they were approved for funding through CPC in the past, $400,000 that we don't know where that's going. So I thought it was worth checking in on that and then thinking about more broadly, is it Elm Court or what else are we doing with that Elm Court piece? So it's at least worth checking in on with the sport.
Because, you know, we were informed by Mass DOT that the bike path wouldn't be happening. They had deemed it just not safe because of the proximity to the, the tracks.
Railroad tracks.
Yeah. Um, I, you know, I have to say, like, I don't know much about the layout of that. I was actually going to take a little field trip down there and then when the bike path got, um, you know, I, I didn't go down there. Do you know much about that?
I, I've been down there. I, I went and took a look a while back. I, I think I'll have to take another look. I mean, I mean, that's open for discussion right now. I, I guess we can look at it and, and see what the opinion is on, on folks. I mean, it would be sort of hidden because you're under the underpass and it's, it's near the town shed. So I mean, maybe two, two birds with one stone. We need power to that shed. We need power to the pickleball courts. If, if it went that way, it, it would be in an area that's not going to be.
Did it include lights for that cost? It did.
Bothering anybody. So I mean, maybe that's.
Yeah. It's a question of how we want to use that space. Yeah. I mean, we'd have to think about, is it feasible? Is there room for it? And then, you know, DPW highway superintendent estimated there's maybe around three acres in that area that you can actually do something with. That DPW facility would take up a chunk of it.
I know the bike packs been, the bike packs have been put on hold that they're not, they have to do all kinds of design. But, I mean, that's something we can look at and think about, I guess.
Would be a great job for a DPW director.
Sure. Absolutely. If you want me to, to at least continue those conversations, happy to keep that moving.
Yeah. Maybe I'll try to get down and take a look at that layout down there.
If it's possible, I'd love to go with you if it's possible to arrange that.
Yeah. I'll, I have no idea when I'll, when I'll get a chance to get down there.
I'm retired, but I could be playing pickleball.
Okay.
So. I mean, they are moving ahead with the new pickleball facility on five and 10. So that looks like that'll be built before ours, right? So.
Oh yeah. I'm very excited about that. Yeah.
I mean, it's not like we can give you an answer tonight, but it's an interesting idea that I think Warren's looking into. I, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Well, this is the first we've heard of this. So we, we got to do a little thinking about this.
Yeah. I didn't think it'd be like, oh, let's go and build it. But I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's something that can be explored. All right.
I mean, town approved it. So we should.
Yeah.
It's somewhere.
Approve the location and everything else. Yeah.
Yeah. And it's been so difficult to find a site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
It is a little out of the way. I, I'll be honest. I think it's a little out of the way. I mean, obviously people would have to drive there. And, you know, I'm, it's pretty isolate, it could be pretty isolated. Okay.
Out of the way might be better for them.
Exactly.
Well, it's certainly better for, than too close, right? There's a, so.
What was the reason?
I mean, from a, just a standpoint, if someone was hurt down there and, you know.
There, there'd always be at least four people down there.
What were the reasons that they didn't want it down by the pavilion? Was there an issue down there between the baseball field backstop and the, and the beginning of the driveway at the pavilion? I think that's town.
Uh, the fire department has their annual, their annual bonfire there.
Oh yeah. It's the, right, the bonfire. And I mean, there's other things that, you know, there's parking at bigger events at the pavilion use that space and.
All right. I'm just trying to remember what that, what the issue was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, here we go again with.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
And if you get a chance to let me know about going down, I'd love to take a look at it.
Sounds good.
We'll be in touch. Just keep reaching out to me. It's fine.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Okay. So we have just a couple of, well, I'm wondering if we could skip, since we have capital planning here. I mean, they look thrilled to be here, but we could skip maybe to topic eight and bring them forward. Do you, does anyone have a problem with that?
Is there anyone else here for any other agenda items? Just curious.
DPW director appointing an election worker letter of support. MVP, are you here for any other?
No. Great.
Just.
I think going to capital improvement makes a lot of sense.
My capital improvement colleagues, come on up to the microphone.
Do you technically have a quorum?
What's that?
Fine. I was thinking, do you technically have a quorum? It doesn't matter.
We're not.
It doesn't matter. But you're not deliberating on anything. You're sharing a report you've already written.
Correct.
Yeah.
They have all the paperwork?
Mm-hmm.
You distribute it all to everybody so they have the spreadsheet on all the summary things?
They have the report and the, and the, the one pager. They don't have the full spreadsheet.
Well, no, we do. We have the, the, the narrative, the, the more detailed narrative, but not, not the spreadsheet.
Do they need that one for now or?
They don't need it tonight, but they should get it to, we should get it to them.
Sorry about that.
That's the, that's the, the full scope of the six-year plan. So a lot of the things that are, that are scheduled to come up over the next five to six years.
I'll get that some.
First, as chair of the committee, I just want to thank all of my colleagues that are on the committee, Kristi, Diana, and Mike Cahill, who joined us this year for the first time. We did a lot of good work, took a lot of time, effort, energy to put this together. We've changed a little bit about how we are presenting the projects to you guys with a lot more sort of explanatory narratives so that you can make that decision. And when the finance committee and the select board get together and really get down to brass tacks of putting things together for the budget, whether we're using free cash or other kinds of things, we have a pretty good plan here, I think. So there's a, it's been broken down sort of into a couple of different things. Some of it's town funded, some of it's department funded, some of it's grant funded, some of it's Community Preservation Act funded. But all these projects that are $10,000 or more are, that were presented to us and we went through them all and put them sort of into a, into a, a table that talks about, and you'll see on the left-hand side, the first line next to each of these projects, we broke them down into what we feel are must-do projects, should do projects, would be nice to do projects, and then projects that we either, that we're deferring because we don't think it's a priority at this point. And then some of the other ones that are, that are decided by other committees, like all the CPA grant ones, whether we're supporting those or not supporting those as far as, as whether we think those are worthy projects or not. Obviously that, that the decisions to fund those are by, from this community preservation committee and not from the select board, the finance committee or whatever. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of needs that the town has at this point. And fortunately, we have a decent amount of free cash this year to, to use. So we should be able to get a lot of these projects done. I think there are some large ticket items on here, especially the ones that have to do with the new boilers at the school, El Hatfield Elementary School, the new roof that needs to be put on the Hatfield Elementary School, the parking lots for both of the schools. And those are projects that we've been sort of deferring a little bit. And I know that the school department has spent a lot of money and that's outlined for you on keeping the boilers alive and keeping them running, fixing things on the roof to make sure that the, that it's, doesn't leak as much as we, as, as it should. And they've been spending all that money out of their budget. I don't think you've come. I don't think you've come to the town at all for, for very much money to fix those things, correct?
We have kept it within the budget.
Right. So, but it's a, it's a decent amount of money that has happened to be, you know, we're talking about $85,000 that they've had to spend on fixing the boilers and another close to $50,000 on fixing the roof. And those things are just, have to happen. I mean, I know the school committee spent the whole winter worried that the boilers weren't gonna make it and that we might have to shut down school. So, we don't have enough free cash to cover all those projects, so we're, you're probably gonna be looking at some questions on whether you're doing a debt exclusion or an override or something like that to, to fund those projects. And those are certainly conversations that we'll be having, I'm sure, in the next couple of weeks between the-
The parking lots aren't, oh, here, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Between the Finance Committee and the, and the, and the Select Board. I think it's a worthy conversation that you guys have to start thinking about as to how we wanna do that. Those projects, of course, the roof and the, the boilers are like no-brainers. And you're talking 2.3, 2.4 million dollars to take those, to take care of those things.
I don't wanna interrupt you, David, but I'm just thinking, just for the, we're, we're kinda going all over the place and we, we know this inside and out because we've been talking about it for months, but maybe we should just sort of go, just for the, for the, for the sake of people watching, so that they can sort of understand, maybe go through the town-funded ones and, and go through these, you know, somewhat quickly, but just to let-
So we have some, some needs with the Highway Department for some new equipment, one being a new dump truck and another, and the frontline F-450 pickup truck that they use on a daily basis. Both are in need of replacement. The dump truck's 25 years old and the F-450's 15 years old, and the town mechanic says that both are very much in need of being replaced. We wanna continue with some of our fire hydrant replacements around town.
I think we should mention the dollar amount and that we would be, you know, that the potential funding source would be the-
That's gonna be 300, almost $400,000 for those two pieces of equipment, and the recommendation would be to put it on our vehicle lease program, which we've been doing for many, many years. We do have capacity in our vehicle lease program to do that and a couple of other pieces of equipment as well. Andrew has spent some time with our lease company and we know what we can, what our capacity is at this point to stay within our budget that, that we won't have to change.
That's a nice way of bringing capital expenses into the, the operating budget. So you're, instead of going out to getting debt or anything else on it, it's a, it's a five-year, usually, lease-to-own program.
Correct.
And it's created a much more reasonable vehicle turnover time than we used to have when we were keeping everything 30 years.
Right.
So-
And then having to go out and borrow the money and, and pay it back rather quickly, this gives us a capacity to do a lot more.
Which would mean that FY '26 cost on that would be under $90,000 for both of those vehicles.
Already built into the capacity.
Already built into the DPW budget, yeah. Like I said, continuing with the fire hydrant replacement program, Tony has, has said that these are some, we have some places around town where fire hydrants need to be fixed, replaced, they're old, they're broken. We've got some from the 70s, from what we understand, that need to be taken care of. A late addition to this plan was our storm water-
Let's back up, though.
Yeah.
Because, so it is, it is six, the estimated cost is $42,000 and the funding source could potentially just be free cash.
Most likely be free cash, yeah.
I just wanna be consistent with each of them.
Sure.
Cover six hydrants.
Six hydrants.
Stormwater asset management plan, Andrew might wanna speak to this a little bit more, but there is some, a town sort of contribution that has to be put to this grant that we're, this program or grant that we're getting.
Clean Water Trust program, they, they have a significant amount of grant funding that they are putting towards these asset management plans. We have one ongoing for, for drinking water and for wastewater as well. The one that was approved for stormwater, the last town meeting last year, did not come with an appropriation. It allowed for potentially borrowing, but the borrowing amount is so small that it's, it's not really worth doing. So this year, we would ask Town Meeting for an appropriation, most likely from free cash, of this $27,837 that would allow this, this program to take place. That unlocks over 60, I think, actually, $80,000 in state grant money, and it's also matched by in-kind services, so staff time. But it's absolutely worth doing to, to then understand better what we might need to do in the future for our assets for stormwater.
And it is, those three asset management plans were approved by Town Meeting.
All three were approved and all three, it said, you know, have an appropriation for, but we never actually moved free cash or, or operating budget funds to do this, so we're still missing a match, which we'll complete this town meeting.
The next couple of things are, are the Hatfield Elementary School boiler replacements and the school roof replacement. We're looking at about $600,000 to replace the, the boilers at the elementary school and just shy of 1.7 million to replace the roof at the elementary school, both of which we're either probably gonna have to borrow or do a debt exclusion vote at Town Meeting and at the ballot box to, to do a 10, 10 or whatever, however many years we decide, pay back on that kind of stuff. The free cash isn't gonna cover that, that kind of stuff, so.
Can I give one other update to the roof project? We had hoped we would be able to qualify for a grant to do solar on the elementary roof that would also cover the cost of the roof. And as that program finally rolled out, the goalpost moved and Hatfield will not qualify for that. And so our opportunity just isn't there. It's also too new for MSBA funds, so we've been looking, in fact, one of the reasons this is deferred for many years now is we've been trying to find other funding sources and it's, they're not there for this at this time. So, I will also note that the roof estimates have tripled since the project's been on the capital plan.
And I know for a lot of us, that feels like a new school, right? So you, you know, you think, how can we already need a roof on such a new school? But it's-
It has hit its life expectancy. You know, we've, the manufacturer who made the probably defective roofing materials is out of business, so there's, there's no recourse on that front either.
And the school is 22 years old.
Yeah, it's not new.
It's not new.
It's-
It feels new to us, but it's not new.
Right.
Most, most residents have to change their roofs between 20 and 25 years, so we're right in that ball, right in that ballpark, so. Next on the list are some, are the, the elementary and Smith Academy parking lots, which we, again, if you go back into our plan, they've been on the, on the plan for four or five years. Both of these projects started at around $200,000 apiece and they're now both approaching $500,000 apiece. Another thought, too, is while we're doing that, is to, is to take care of Billings Way and clean that whole area up down there, redo Billings Way all the way out to the, where our town property stops at the pavilion, do all the parking lots, both behind the school and the front of school, get that all looking in a much better, you know, much better for everybody. And it's something that's, you know, it's, it's a real mess back there. The plowing is very difficult, it makes a real mess back there, some potential for somebody to get hurt because they're tripping on something that's not-
Right, you've got kids riding bikes.
Kids riding bikes, you know, all that kind of, parents are driving in there all the time, dropping their kids off and picking them up. It's, again, it's one of these things that we've been kicking the can down the road for so many years and the project numbers just keep going up. And it's time for us to-
It's really the cost of deferred maintenance.
Yeah, exactly. So again, this is gonna be either a borrow or a debt exclusion if we decide to put it, put it that way, to be able to pay for those kinds of things.
And just as a note, it says here, plus Billings, that Billings Way cost estimate is now $142,000.
$142,000.
$142,000.
On top of the 470.
The 474 is for the parking lot and Billings would be 142.
Another piece of the puzzle here is to finish the replacement of the carpeting at Smith Academy that Diana would have gone to school walking on 35 years ago, when the school first opened, with taking out some of the old carpet out and replacing it all with plain, regular tile. A $76,000 project to finish, taking care of all that. Again, another one of these aesthetic things for the schools to make the, the building really look nice and to get rid of some of the stuff that's 40-plus years old that needs to be replaced.
And we, we, we made some progress on that project because of the host community agreement funding that came from Treeworks.
Right.
That, you know, they dedicated 40,000 to that.
Hey, we did fund, we did fund some of that, right?
Yeah, that, that was from the HCA.
This would finish the rest of the building.
It would finish all of it.
So the, so the additional 76,000 would take care of the rest of the building, get it all taken care of, get all the old carpeting out of there that was put in in 1980 and, and really clean the place up, so.
That fluorescent green-
Yeah, with, with more appropriate colors.
Is it orange or green? There's some green, right?
There's both. Yeah. Yeah. The police chief has asked for a cruiser replacement at a cost of $85,000. Again, this is, would be about an eight, almost $19,000 addition to our vehicle lease program, and in five years, we would, we would own that, that cruiser. We have a 2017 black and white with many, many, many hours and miles on it, and then, again, this is also a recommendation of the town mechanic that that car be replaced.
And that, but he would not be cycling out a cruiser?
That's not, I don't think this committee has made a, is in a position to-
I think that would be a decision you guys would have to make with the police chief as to what to do with that cruiser that's coming, quote-unquote, "coming offline," whether you keep it as a backup or get rid of it as surplus.
I, I, you know, we'll definitely talk about that with the financial team.
The Elm Court building that's been, that was started a couple of years ago down there for the, for the DPW, there's Phase Three, which is $139,500. That would finish that building down there and then give the DPW the ability to move the town mechanic into that building, which would free up space at the, at the yard up in, up on, where we could park more and more of our vehicles indoors, instead of having them being parked outside sometimes because there's stuff in there being worked on. Then that new building down on Elm Court would then be finished and be able to be used the way it should. Again, this would be a, either a free cash situation or a borrowing situation, but-
So I think we, at some point, going through this list, stopped saying the musts and the shoulds. So the, the musts were the dump truck, the F-450 pickup for the DPW, the fire hydrant replacement, that stormwater assessment management plan, the elementary school boiler, the entry, elementary school roof replacement, and then the rest have been should, should, we should do.
Should do, yes.
Right.
Okay. Again, on the should do, it's, well, this is a, this one, we were, we were kinda torn with it. One of the things that's been on the list for a long time is doing some work on the Omasa well situation, but this was something, I think, that was created by our former DPW Director, and I'm not sure that this is a project right now that, that we're looking forward, to go forward with because the water superintendent doesn't really know much about this project or what needs to happen, and it's, I think we need to do some more digging, research, or maybe consulting with Tony as to what, what we should be thinking about with this.
And the water superintendent had a few projects that were higher up on his list.
Yeah, exactly.
We did touch base on it again today, and he, again, just said he, he had some concerns about the project, so.
Sure.
And what was originally on the budget was for a very small start to the project, but we wanted to make sure everybody looked at the whole cost of the project so that we weren't biting off what was very affordable to start with, but then got us invested in a project that had deep roots.
Right.
Very deep roots and then-
Talking about a million and a half project by the time it's all done, as was estimated.
Really, the discussion was around, with this, but generally speaking, from a capital planning perspective, making sure that we're thinking very strategically about any project that is phased.
Correct.
And not getting it started until we could, we could see a pathway to complete all phases.
Right.
Because then you could potentially just be-
One of, one of the reasons why we have the spreadsheet that we do, because it shows the phases as the years go down, and if you're not really paying attention to that, then you don't really see that there's more to come.
And the strategic-
The design was $50,000 for this year, but that's only a very, very tiny, small-
Right. But why spend $50,000 if you're not gonna-
Why spend $50,000 if you're not gonna do the rest of the project?
And it, and then it also allows us to talk strategically about it, as well as when larger parts of phased projects hit, at the same time, other capital projects are also coming on the horizon. So that's a, that spreadsheet is a really great document and tool that, yeah.
Another should is a, the council aging would like to replace the, the van that, that we received as a donation from the PBTA. It's a 2015. That does have a fair amount of miles on it and, and wear and tear. That project would be about $110,000 with almost a $25,000 addition to our lease program. We did look into some other alternatives to this. There is a handicap accessible van that the school department has, that they're not really using, but it's not really set up properly to, for our seniors to be able to use, so it's not a viable option. But one of the things we have talked about is possibly a, an agreement between the schools and the council aging, that if the schools, and maybe possibly getting rid of that school van, and using the, if, if there was ever a child that needed transport in a wheelchair that we could work with the council on aging to, to be able to use it to take the child to school in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon and, and make it a multi-functional piece of equipment and not just dedicate it necessarily to one department.
And use it specifically as a trade against the purchase or the lease of this new-
So this might be a way to help the council on aging get their needs met sooner.
Sooner, yeah.
And so long as the school has the opportunity to have access to it.
Should the need arise.
Should the need arise.
It doesn't currently exist.
It does, it doesn't today.
But it could tomorrow.
Absolutely.
The next couple of projects here are what we've prioritized as being, this would be nice to do if we have the money, but it's not necessarily something that's at the top of the list, and that would be the guardrail replacements on Main Street down closer to the sewage treatment plant where all the white, the white posts are with the, with the heavy cable that goes through it, to put actual metal guardrails down there and clean that area up at a cost of about $250,000. Again, this would either be a free cash or a borrow situation. The, the Highway Department had the last couple of years has asked for a attachment to the payloader that they have, which is a, which would be a boom mower. I'm sure people have seen in the springtime, maybe in the summertime, somebody on the DPW out with their thing, with that mower that goes over the side of the, and mows the sides of roads and things like that. That's something that we've been renting or borrowing for a number of years. This would be one that we could own and then maybe we could do more maintenance than we do currently now because of limited money to spend. And it's also a possibility that we could be the person who's lending it to others and maybe getting some money in return for that kind of, of a piece of equipment. That's $138,000. Again, it could be put on the vehicle lease. We did get a price from our company of about $31,000 for the next five years. Or we could just possibly use free cash and, and pay for it one time and be done with it. So there's, there's that possibility. Then there's a couple that were requests that we're deferring or they're contingent. We were deferring replacing the fire chief's, we're recommending we're deferring replacing the fire chief's vehicle. We feel that that's gonna be okay for now and that in an emergency, they do have the pickup truck that they could use in that situation. I know there's some fear about whether or not that thing's gonna make it for very much longer, but right now, we're, we're okay. And the, the mechanic said it's not something he would necessarily feel has to be done right away.
And even the chief agreed that it could wait.
Right.
Yep.
And then the living quarters building, if we were to ever have to have overnight workers, if we went with a bigger fire department plan than, than current services, we need some sort of living quarters at a, a three-year lease of $45,000. And I guess if that were ever to be needed, it would be part of any override that the, the town would have to decide on to fully fund that, our emergency services for 24/7 coverage, so. Our two Chapter 90 state grant fund things would be, one, we have- Our, uh, two chapter ninety state grant fund things would be, one, um, we have, we're having a hundred, four hundred, one thousand dollars this year in chapter ninety money to work on our roads. And so the, the recommendation with that money is to, uh, do the most critical needed areas on Elm Street from between the, the, the bridge and the legion and let the, uh, the DPW people and the paving people decide which are the most critical needs up there. And then next year, hopefully be able to finish that project and do the whole of Elm Street. Uh, but four hundred thousand dollars won't get us the whole length of, uh, of Elm Street. Uh, but again, that's chapter ninety money that we get from the state. It's the only place we can spend it is on roads. So it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. Uh, and then there's a, there's a grant that's out there that we're waiting to hear from. I don't think we've heard from this, the sidewalk grant yet, Andrew, have we? No.
Yeah.
So there's a grant out there to replace some of the sidewalks on Main Street, uh, the asphalt ones with some concrete ones that are, uh, in need from the corner of Maple towards the town hall. Uh, and it's a two hundred and five thousand dollar grant. So we're, we're just waiting on hearing from that. We're hoping to hear in the next couple of weeks.
It should be soon.
Hopefully before a town meeting, we'll know for sure one way or the other whether that thing's come through. Some, some other things, we have a couple of, of payments left on a few vehicles on our, in our lease program. Uh, we have, um, one payment due on our ambulance at fifty-three thousand dollars, six thirty-one, which is already in the budget. And we have two payments left on the current COA van, the DPW pickup, uh, fifty thousand, five hundred, which are, again, are also in the DPW operating budget. So we'll be making one pro, one per, uh, one payment this year, one payment next year. Um, those are the only vehicles that we have on any current lease program right now. That's why we have capacity to start looking at the dump truck and the pickup trucks that people want and/or the boom, boom mower attachment or whatever we want to go, however we want to go with that. Uh, we put the numbers together because we do have the capacity to add, uh, that's already money that's in the, in the DPW budget to, to be used for that. And you look like you had a question.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I mean, I, I was first thinking if, I mean, if we do ask the taxpayers for a override, whether we look at the boilers and the school roof, I first want to know, do we know what our borrowing capacity is at this time for the town?
That's a great question. Um, I can, I can calculate that for you, but.
I mean, ultimately, the taxpayers will be those that decide.
Sure, sure.
But it's how we want to approach this, because I know the boilers are important and, and the roof is important. We've been kicking the can down on those two.
Yeah.
And, and I guess, but, and then this is such a bad time to ask anybody because the climate right now is so uncertain. We don't know if the USDA is gonna cut off our funding for the wastewater treatment or not. We're hoping that money comes through.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think we should.
Yeah, but I mean.
Put that out there as a, you know, because we, we actually had a conversation.
But I mean, I still gotta give you what I'm thinking in my head. I'm sorry, but, uh, so if we were to ask whether we should put a couple of these things together, see what our borrowing capacity is, and then let the town decide if they want to do it or not, or, because also out of that million dollars that we have in free cash, I'm not sure how much should be put into stabilization fund, because we always put money, some money away into stabilization for a rainy day.
Yeah.
So I guess these are open for discussion right now. I, I know the needs, the needs are always there. That's just how much money we got or what the, what the taxpayers are willing to spend, but it's their decision.
There's no question it's about what, what the taxpayers are willing to spend. It's also how much longer can we keep kicking the can down the road without getting this done?
Passing ourselves more money.
And the costs just keep going up, you know, especially as you talk about, you don't know if this is gonna open, what's gonna happen if the tariffs go up, you know? How much more money is it gonna be to, to do these things?
I've worked for many a years in the maintenance and that's the last thing people do is they, they don't want, they don't see the stuff behind the scenes, like they don't see what's under the engine.
Yeah.
So they don't tend to carry or worry about it. I understand that point.
If you needed a roof on your house or you needed boilers for your house, you'd be taking care of it, no matter what the climate is right now.
That's why, that's why I'm bringing up the idea of, uh, probably put a couple of these things together and, and let the taxpayers decide. That's, that's why.
This is the only way it's gonna get done because there's not ever gonna be enough free cash.
Right.
To, to pay for all these kinds of things. So every single year, I don't know how you guys feel, but every single year, there should be something on the town meeting warrant or on the, on the ballot. We need to borrow money for this or we need to do a debt exclusion for that. These are projects that need to get done. If you look at this spreadsheet and you're looking at some of the projects down the road that need to be done, like, uh, emergency services building, DPW building, uh, what are we, you know, does the council on aging need to, to be in a bigger space than they are now? Does the library need to be replaced? There's all these projects that you're talking twenty, thirty, forty, fifty million dollars worth of projects that in the next five to ten years that this town is gonna have to be looking at really seriously as to whether or not we're gonna be able, or we're gonna do those kinds of things and to keep up with the, with giving the services to the residents that we, that they deserve.
So I think, you know, historically, we have at all costs avoided putting anything on an override or a debt exclusion. And that's partly why there's this, and I've sort of had a change of heart that we should be, it should be a boat of residents.
Yeah.
Right? So ask them if they want new parking lots. Ask them if they want these things and then we know.
Yeah.
And it's a decision of townspeople. Um, but we're getting a little outside the scope of what we're here. That's definitely a discussion for when we have the full team together. I don't want to get too derailed on that and not get through this list, but there was a question in the back.
Chris, thirty-four, Evan. Um, my concern would be if the roof did leak, what it would cost to the town, mold, mildew, you know, um, it'd be, one, you'd have to fix the roof at whatever cost, and then you have the additional costs of whatever damage from, from water and.
And closing the school and.
We understand that. I mean, originally, we were working on, well, the school was working on a grant. They thought they might have gotten it. It was gonna replace the roof, fix the roof, put in solar, and obviously that's fallen through. So maybe this is the year to ask the voters and say, this is gotta be done, so.
You know, and, and, you know, Christie had, I, I shouldn't speak for Christie, but, you know, the boiler is really of a concern because you can't, school can't be open without heat.
Both, both the boiler and the roof have hit the point that if either, if either failed in a more dramatic way, we're looking at closing schools, depending on the time of year and depending where the roof leak was.
Right.
Um, but mold remediation is a sleepless night kind of issue for people who sit over at schools.
Right.
Um, and one that we worry about when the weather gets bad. So appreciate the comment. And it's not lost on us.
And one parents would be worried about whether they want to send their child to a building that has.
Right.
Mold or builder in it as well.
And on the boiler, the repair bills for the past four and a half years have topped eighty-five thousand.
Right.
Yeah. So.
To keep moving, we have, um, we have a couple more musts here on, on some, the, uh, DPW, the water and sewer department each have asked for a new pickup truck, uh, that we have a, a two thousand six and a two thousand eleven, which are in really rough shape. They do a lot of work. They do a lot of plowing. They do a lot of sanding. Uh, they're the everyday vehicles for those two departments. Um, and the, the thought right now at least is that we should be, we, again, they would be part of a lease program, but instead of it being in the DPW necessarily operating budget, it might be coming out of, it's possible it could come out of the water and sewer enterprise funds to make those payments on an annual basis for the next five years. So, so something that the finance team will have to look at to see if that's gonna be feasible, or maybe some of it comes out of those two enterprise funds and maybe some of it goes into the operating budget. Could be a little of both, sort of like we did with the ambulance. Uh, twenty thousand dollars of the ambulance payment comes out of ambulance, was it retained earnings or something like that, whatever that one is called. And then, and then the town pays the, the rest of it. So, um, certainly something, and I know that one of the, these are, both of those are also recommended by the town mechanic. And, uh, Tony, I think, sent a little note in with his request on the one for the water department that last year, the, uh, the gas tank actually rusted through and, and fell out of the back of it while they were driving down the street one day. So they had to fix it. So that's pretty good indication that it needs to be replaced. Um, the next group is all that, uh, of six or seven projects here that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee supports, and they're all CPA grant funded. And from talking with Andrew, it looks like the Community Preservation Committee is going to fund all of these projects, uh, for this coming year as long as they pass, uh, at town meeting. One would be to re, replace the roof at the farm museum, uh, with a metal roof at a cost of forty thousand dollars. Uh, putting irrigation out here in the Smith Academy Park to keep that looking really nice now that we've spent the money to put the, the, the structure out there, um, the, the trees, everything looks really nice. We had a, I don't know how many people were out there during the, for the, for Christmas time. We had the Christmas carol thing out there that the council on aging did. It was great. I know we have the music concerts out here in the spring and the summer and fall, and it's really being used and, you know, keeping that place irrigated so that the grass is nice, that people can enjoy it out there would be really, a really uh, important thing. So I know they're also the, one of the things that they're looking to do is to put some kind of a well out here where, uh, they could draw the water from rather than using, uh, town water. So it's one of the things that they're looking at as well. Uh, some, uh, they're, they're looking to do some upgrades at the Main Street Cemetery and, uh, cremation rehabilitation that, which would add cremation plots to that cemetery at a cost of about twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the Main Street Cemetery would, they would create a, a walkway and call it Oliver Smith Park, which would, uh, not, I haven't seen the drawings. I don't know what, what it looks like, but, uh, it's a, it's an area that would be, um, that some sort of brick or paver walkway would be put out there, um, for people to be able to use. Um, the Main Street Cemetery, also the road needs some paving so that they would do some of the paving down there to make it more usable and more, and easier access for the folks who need to go in there. And then the same kind of thing would be done on the Brad Street Cemetery up in North Hatfield, um, which would make expanding that cemetery a little bit easier and more usable for, for folks. A couple of the projects that are on the CPA that are being deferred right now are the, uh, Prospect Court Bridge over the Mill River, doing the rehab on that, and also the, the last phase of the, the walking path at Smith Academy. They want to see that current phase, how much it's actually is, is gonna be, is done and see where they're at before they put any more funding towards that. But that's where we are. Um, we did, like I said, uh, this, I think Christie put together this kind of, of a sheet, and I think it's, it's much more usable for everybody to see and, and gives you some more information under each of the projects to make a, a better, more informed decision. And, uh, again, I thank my colleagues on the, on the, uh, capital, uh, planning committee for all the work that we've done.
And then department heads who put a lot of time and effort into submittals.
Correct.
Because we don't generate the list.
And getting us the information we needed. There's, you know, in some, in some cases there's some real, you know, nitty gritty information. And I just want to, um, also thank, you know, my colleagues on capital planning, but, you know, David's a, a great chair, keeps us really focused and organized, but Christie did a lot of work.
Yeah.
On, um, on those new forms. And it's, I think it's just gonna be so much easier, you know, because there were times over the many years of budget that you, you're looking at the capital and then you try to, why was this vehicle on there? You know, it's hard to keep it all straight, right?
Sure.
So having that as a tool with that, those details is gonna be really helpful, you know, as we're really getting down to decision time.
Right.
So.
Anybody have questions? Greg, anything?
No, that's a lot of work you did. Wow. Nice.
A lot of good, good discussion, a lot of good work. And you're right about the, you know, we had help from.
Sure.
You know, department heads, town mechanic, you know, those are, those are important pieces of information to have.
Now it's up to us to work with everybody and try to determine what we're gonna present.
We can afford.
At a meeting and what we're gonna ask for and how to go about it. But I guess some other facts, facts will need to know what we have for borrowing capacity and, and if we were to go and get a couple of money and what might be the effects on the tax rate, because the residents would want to know that, so.
Yep. Most of the debt we have right now is excluded. That's just helpful to know.
Because that roof, now that that grant didn't go through, I think that roof and the boilers, that's, that's important.
And those are both projects that really need to be done.
Right.
This summer, this fall.
While kids aren't there.
Uh, while kids aren't there, while those things aren't going on. So.
More like yesterday.
You know, we're, we're hoping that things will pass at town meeting and the, and the ballot box and the school can get right on the, the, you know, getting the final bids and getting that, those projects going.
It'd be a pretty tight schedule.
And they, they know that, they know it's a tight schedule, so.
They've, they've been lining up bids, like, and making sure that we get information in from at least three parties on everything so that we can.
Some I thought would be to.
Wouldn't that be a formal bid?
It will be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have the.
We'll have it all done, ready to go.
But just finding people who have availability and knowledge and just starting that so that that process is easy.
Can it be bid now? We don't have to wait.
Yeah, we could do it.
Why wouldn't we?
I'm gonna meet with, um, Connor this week to talk about.
Because then we'd even have more information at town meeting about the actual bids.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not great practice to do it before we have a procurement, uh, before we have a, uh, funding source, but I think if we're close enough and we anticipate having one, then it's absolutely fine to do it.
I mean, I know we even had the fire department up there spraying water on the roof to try to find out the exact location of, you know, where the penetration is in that roof. And it's so hard to, you have a leak here and it doesn't come out to down there somewhere.
The number of leaks we have mitigated, I could not count. You could look at the tiles on our ceiling.
But now that that grant didn't go through, I think it's time to, to do the ask.
Yeah.
And, you know, there were people not really thrilled about the grant. You remember the, the solar, doing it as a solar, solar project, yeah.
And, and doing the roof will allow us to have a roof that's stable enough to go do solar at the elementary school, which would be like the next thing to do. And if we get to do it on our own, I would expect we would do better with our, you know, savings and electrical needs. So there's some upside in that, small silver lining.
Great. Well, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just thinking about all this stuff. It's like some, something as simple as the roof is overwhelmingly expensive, I think, but not doing it is more expensive, so.
Next year, next year it'll cost another two or three hundred.
Right. And you said it tripled since you've been thinking about doing this. Like, oh my God.
Parking lots, I think, actually, when I first started working on this capital plan, we're projected around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
And now we're five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
That's the cost of deferred maintenance.
That's right.
Yeah.
Plus the number of tires that have popped in the meantime.
Oh.
Real thing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so we have jumped around a little bit, so let's get ourselves back on track here and circle back to topic number five, which is, which is appointments and resignation. So we are, um, being asked to appoint a new election worker, Beverly Moulton. Um, and that request comes from our town clerk.
I'll make a motion to, Beverly Moulton to as an election worker.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Beverly, for stepping up and volunteering. That needs to be signed, Ed. Okay, so next we have, um, discussion of the DPW director position, next steps. Um, did you want me to talk about our meeting?
Yeah, I, I think it would be appropriate for you to fill in, uh, the board on, on the meetings that you had, um, last.
Yep, we've, I've had two meetings. Um, so I sat down with, um, with Andrew and with our three superintendents, so Kenny Holhut, Tony for Sewer, um, Tony Listowski for Water and Garrett Berry for Highway, and, um, just sort of gave them the floor and an opportunity to talk about how they were feeling, um, about, you know, really what we should do about filling this position. Um, and I was, I was really surprised that, um, you know, right, right, right away Kenny said, we absolutely need to fill this. We need a DPW director. Um, Tony was, um, sort of acknowledged that the water department works a little more independently from the DPW than the other two departments. So he was like, it's really not gonna affect him maybe directly as much. Um, and then Garrett, um, you know, clearly said, we, he, they, we do need someone. Um, you know, he talked about, you know, the engineering component of, of, you know, being an engineer and understanding some of those things. And he, you know, he mentioned. an engineer and understanding some of those things, and he, you know, he mentioned projects like the asset management, you know, so there are larger things that go on that aren't just day to day, and Smith Academy Park is a great example of something that is a larger, more strategic project. So I really got the impression that our superintendents support having a full-fledged DPW director. Is that your takeaway?
Yeah, I, I think the takeaway I got was they definitely need some kind of additional support, just.
Right.
I think you captured the conversation well, I think, you know, even when Phil was here, some of the work went to Garrett and some of the day to day work that the DPW director is responsible for, just because there are a lot of things that that position is responsible for. I think everyone said there were things that we might not have known about that the director was doing or, or could do if we had a different director, so.
Both Kenny and Garrett acknowledged, you know, really not necessarily understanding how much work Phil was really doing, and then now that it's been a couple of months saying, okay, there is, there is a lot that, you know, they were, is getting done. And then today, Andrew and I met with Dave Prickett, Justin Skelly, and, you know, we talked with them about, you know, they've been the engineers on, you know, they're up at the water treatment plant, they've done, you know, other things in town, very, very familiar with Hatfield and the Hatfield DPW, and I definitely came away from the discussions with them that they also feel that we really need to, you know, have someone in that role.
Yeah, I, I think that they, you know, work with a lot of different towns and cities across Massachusetts, and they see a lot of different structures, and I think it's common to have, you know, somebody who can be a little more in-depth in interfacing with the superintendents and with the board and with the public, the engineers, it's helpful to have someone filling that role, especially thinking about some of the bigger picture projects. But I, I think the upshot from them was if you don't have someone in that role, you're asking more of everyone else, which it might be something we're comfortable with. There are other people who have to take on more, whether it's the superintendents, the select board, town administrator, there's folks who, who would be taking on more work without having that position. And if you're comfortable with, with everyone being suited to that, then it can work, but it is, there is another layer there, and I think that's kind of the feeling that you've been getting, Chair.
That strategic thinking, that, you know, sort of system, you know, I get the impression sort of that system-wide, like really looking at the water system and the sewer system and that larger, you know, and then grants, and, you know, I, there's a lot more to it than just the day-to-day operations, so. You know, and they were great about, you know, saying, you know, look at, look at some other communities and maybe look at what they, they've done for hiring and, so. I mean, it was, wasn't a very long meeting, but I, it was productive, and so, you know, overwhelmingly, I think I'm getting the message, and I've actually had plenty of people from town reach out and say, you know, we need a DPW director, you know, it's a large department. So.
Well, I've been going back and forth trying, I've been doing my research, and, and I, I think I'm at the point now where, well, maybe we should see if there's somebody out there that meets the qualifications, or either we get somebody under Garrett to work in that department, so either way, I think we need somebody, either somebody under, with Garrett in the DPW to take on responsibilities, or a DPW director, but I think we have to ensure if we have a DPW director that he's going to be involved with contracts, he's going to be involved with planning, he's going to be involved with oversight, and there's going to be making sure that the job that he's supposed to do is getting done. So, I mean, if, if the board wants to take a look and see if there's somebody out there that might meet what we feel is, is good, then I guess I am not going to object to that, but I'm still, like, I'm still bouncing between the two.
You know, Dave Prickett did, was clear about being careful about burnout, of giving, you know, too much responsibility and too many duties to, he mentioned even your position, Garrett's position, you know, we have to be reasonable in our expectations.
Greg's thoughts?
I've been going back and forth like you, and, and I talked to the various employees around here about it too, and it's, I, I think, I think both ways could work, I just don't know which way is better. I'm certain both ways could work. I, I think our people could take it over with extra, with extra responsibilities, but.
Was that recent conversation? Because that, I mean.
Well, about a month ago, yeah, with a couple of them, yes. Yeah.
I mean, I thought Garrett was pretty clear in saying he thought we needed somebody.
Yeah.
I think he thinks we need support.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but how much? Yeah, I don't know.
Well, that's the other.
Right.
Garrett sees there's, there's a hole there somewhere, that there's, there's some, there's extra responsibilities that need to be done, because he's been filling a lot of bills since, just, that's how it's kind of worked. It's been harder for him to do everything.
I'm going to ask you, Andrew, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
I mean, since, since you're new here, and you've been able to deal with everybody, you've been able to work with these guys, and you've gotten an idea sort of what they do and what's happening, plus you have prior background in, in running a city and all that stuff, so do you think it's advisable that we move to maybe a DPW director, or should we work with somebody added to the DPW with Garrett?
What I would recommend at this point is to post for either this position or, you know, go through it, and I think we can even start that process tonight, see if there's anything in here that doesn't need to be in the position, and see what we get from posting. You might find somebody who is exactly what we need and, and we can afford them, and I think that the department would benefit, the town would benefit from having a really good, sharp director. I think there's enough work to be done that, that we can fill it. It's hard to hire for DPW directors. We might not find the right person, and I think hiring the wrong person is worse than hiring nobody at all. In this position, that was something that was said by our engineers today.
They did say that.
I, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. You know, I floated a few different possibilities. I think there's the, the creating of a new position of just focusing on those capital assets and projects, that's one way you could take it. That's kind of driven by, by who's out there and who could fill this position. So I would say overall, it feels like there's consensus from this board that we should at least explore having a director, and I think I'd recommend posting a modified version of the current job description and seeing what happens, unless there's a real interest in instead going with the kind of more specialized projects, capital assets and projects, director position, really focus on facilities. The way I see it, I'm seeing facilities as a major focus because we, and capital planning, budgeting, and kind of overall strategy, those are the buckets that I think you need to fill, and that could be done by a director or it could be done by this more hyper position.
I appreciate your opinion, because sometimes a fresher set of eyes, because I've been in town all my life, so I mean, I have a difference of opinion, but it's always good to listen to another opinion and what somebody else is thinking if you're undecided, so. I, I do like that recommendation you're making, I sort of, it sort of makes sense.
I, I just really want to look for a candidate that has great communication skills. It was always something that I felt was, could be done better. Yeah, lacking, I was going to take a positive, but not, because I think townspeople, this is, this is our second largest department, and, and I think that they kind of deserve to know a little bit more about what was going on in the department than they'd been informed of, you know, over the last handful of years, even minor stuff, right? Like, you know, I was telling Andrew, Jim Reedy used to come and sit at all the meetings and he'd give an update, and it might be small stuff, you know, or whatever, putting out snow sticks, we're flushing hydrants, we're, you know, but there was always an update and people sort of knew what was going on in the department, and I think we, I'd like to really get back to a place where residents know more, we know more, and residents know more about what's going on. So that's somebody who's really got good communication skills and is willing to come to meetings.
That might be a good exercise for each of you to do individually, and maybe we talked about it at some point, but think about what your priorities are for that position, because then when candidates come in, then you'll be able to think, does anyone check all our boxes, or which boxes do they check, and then you'll be ready to go with a, with a hire.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Time's a-wastin'.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are there any changes in this job description that you'd like to be made before we post? And if you wanted to, you could send them to me if you need to, and I can synthesize and do something, or, to me, the biggest question is, there's a requirement in here to have a degree in engineering with a minimum of five years' responsible experience in municipal fireworks.
That's sort of in the bylaw. I mean, some of this stuff was, we do have a bylaw that was passed. If we have a DPW director, I thought we had to follow the bylaw regulation, or are we, or was that just an opinion from our legal? How did our legal leave it as far as if we have a DPW director, does, do they have to fit in what that wording is?
It's a, it's a great question. The legal opinion was that it's difficult to enforce something like that. The, the, the town council said it doesn't oblige you to have to, obligate you to hire somebody, because it's always subject to appropriation and everything else, that's a decision. I can ask specifically, if you do hire someone, are you required to make it somebody with an engineering degree? But I, I don't think you would be. I, I think you're allowed, you'd have to be allowed to adjust the job description as you see fit, and it's part of the prerogative of the board.
So the other two provisions in that paragraph, one is having a CDL, which makes sense, but the waste and wastewater treatment operator licenses, that seems.
That seems like a lot.
That seems like a lot, because if someone has that license, you know, they're.
They're doing something else.
They're doing something else, yeah.
They're running a.
They're capable of doing, so I'm not, I'm not sure that's really needed either. I mean, it's, I don't know how you feel about that, but.
I, I did look at that, I did read that, and I was wondering about that, I don't know if it's something difficult to get or something.
I believe it's pretty difficult to get.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, they're in here as desirable, so it wouldn't keep you from getting anyone. Now, it does, it lists engineering degrees as a requirement, so that could keep you from getting somebody, that's why I would recommend either making it desirable or removing it. I, I think putting out something that gives you the widest pool of candidates would be wise.
Right.
Oh.
Preferred.
Well, instead of desirable?
Preferred on the engineering degree and then desirable maybe on the, I don't know, I, I just don't know about those sewer licenses, if that even needs to be mentioned, but that's just me.
Always got to have some knowledge of wastewater treatment.
Thanks, Christie.
Because he's going to have to deal with some issues, so.
Yeah.
I don't know.
You never know.
Never know what you find, sometimes you find that ruby inside the box, right? The gem. John has a question?
Yes, Mr. Pease.
You hit on the subject, good communication skills. I mean, you mentioned the past director, previous one that we had. He did leave him, well, technically someone left a machine in a, how can you say it?
John, this is, this is, this is water under the bridge many years ago, I don't know where you're going with this, but.
Water over the bridge, but just to, you know, way their environment is now changing, that this person should be on top of things, if it's taking care of school buildings, knowing loops are leaking up to center for facilities management, know that there's, you know, how can you say it, plastic, if it's in the library, to put over the, you know, not that I didn't know to do that, you know.
John, there's, there's some, there's duties like that clearly spelled out in here, right.
The project that's out on West Street, just, you know, meeting with the neighbors and telling them the contract, hey, you're supposed to be doing this, not, you know, the contract, not the, how can you say it, you know.
Gotcha.
You know, the town, the person, you know, chewing my ass off when it's supposed to be your, your job to do it, you know, let's, you know, kind of, just, you know, I don't know, it's old school logic or something, but, you know, they are capable, they are capable of handling this now, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anything else on that?
Another question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't see.
I'm assuming this is going to be, going to take a few months for this position to fill.
I would think so.
Spring seems to be one of the busiest times for our DPW, does Garrett need, you know, a temporary helper position to get some of the spring projects done in, while we're waiting to fill this position?
I think Garrett would communicate with that, that with us if, if he felt that was necessary, so he certainly should, if he feels that, you know, he, he needs the extra help. I mean, winter's busy too, when, you know, there's really no non-busy time for the DPW, so, and Garrett's a great communicator, and I, you know, he knows he's got an open line of communication with us, and I think if he felt that way, he would definitely communicate it to us.
Yeah, I'll at least poke the idea with him to see if he needs anything.
We can ask him, but.
I think we've been, he's been very communicative about what he needs.
And I think he's got a pretty good crew that, that he's working with right now, and.
It's a good question.
It is a good question.
Are we comfortable with me drafting something, sending it perhaps to the chair for review and then getting it posted as soon as possible, or?
Like a post, a job posting?
A job posting, job.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that now. I mean, I, I've made a decision, we'll go out and see what we get. I mean, I've been struggling with this back and forth, so why, why not?
I have too, and I, I think where I really sort of landed is sort of remembering that this isn't a person, it's a position, right? And so we need to get past, and thinking about.
We need to get past the persons, we got to think of the position.
The position, and, you know, and really making sure we're doing what we can, sorry, part of my pen just fell, to support our DPW, our DPW superintendents and the other employees, and make sure that we're looking after our buildings and our roads and projects and everything to the extent that our townspeople deserve.
Do any of the three superintendents have any, review this job description, that they would have any input on, or any suggestions?
That's a good idea. That's a great idea, because the posting can go out while this is still, right, we're still working on this. Ideally, we'd have it ready.
Yeah, I like having the job description.
Right.
Done, but I don't think we're far off.
Yeah, okay.
I think this has been a good process for us to actually do some research and find out and see what's, what's the best direction for us to go into, so.
I agree, and seeing how the supervisors feel and talk to them and get their opinion, you know, how they, how they feel this is going to go, because, yeah, things change.
Indeed, okay.
Very good.
Okay, now we can move past that.
We can move past that, and remember, we do, it could be, we do have the April 2nd, there's a hearing, we could have an agenda item to finalize that, because that's just next week, you know, especially if you had some changes to this based on input from the superintendents, right? We would have the ability to have a quick agenda item.
Yeah.
About that.
You can plan to post after that if you want, just to review any changes to the job description, okay, let's do that.
Okay, so I just want to move along here, because we do have somebody waiting for some future agenda items here. So topic seven, administrative, town administrator report, and you have the letter of support for the MVP grant.
Yeah, that's, I, I think I'll keep it to just that tonight on the report. So this was placed in your packet late, but there's a draft letter here. The MVP grant, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, that's what funded our comprehensive plan, and they love funding follow-up projects to, to the projects that they fund. This would be for an action grant, that would be a study with the town of Hadley as well, and we would look into. And we would look into mapping and basically coming up with a plan for how to protect and, and preserve and better use our ditch network, which was floated as one of the priorities coming out of the comprehensive plan. Great way to support farmers and it's also a great way to, it kind of functions as stormwater infrastructure and also can help us better understand what could happen during floods and mitigate future flooding events.
I think we saw what could happen during floods last year.
Yeah, there you go.
And the impact it has on, you know, our farmers and our farm fields, so.
Yeah. So all around feels like something that checks a lot of boxes for us and could be a good thing to advance. So we're getting a scope put together by an engineer and they've actually helped us a ton with the application. So we would work with them, you know, we would go through a process if needed, but work with them should we be awarded the funding. So the deadline is in two weeks, but having a letter from the, from the board support would be fantastic if it's something you're comfortable with supporting.
I am.
I'm as well.
Great. So that letter is there for your signature?
Need a motion to sign it or just sign it?
Probably best to have a motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we support the letter of support for MVP grant.
Great, second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for your work on this, Andrew.
Oh, and this was some great assistance we got on this from our assistant planner. Bella put this together, so it's very good.
Great. Okay, so next steps for the FY '26 budget and warrant?
Yep. So this is really just for me to say that I think at our next meeting, we're going to try to keep it clear of most other agenda items. We can really just dig in.
Yeah, it's time.
Budget and the warrant, we're there.
That's good.
We've been having all these conversations. I think we're close. I want to tee up for you now. What I'm viewing as the big decisions that need to happen now on the budget.
Okay.
I've been working through the large budget spreadsheet. I've shown it, worked through it with the finance committee as well. I'm seeing about $100,000 right now that we were above our, $100,000 in expenditures above our revenues right now is what I'm seeing essentially. I'm still working through it to see if there's other sources that I haven't been considering from the workbook or if there's, you know, other funding that's, or other expenditures that are easy to cut. But that's kind of where I'm at. And that's before the finance committee last night suggested taking $100,000 in free cash and using that towards our health insurance increases. Since that was a significantly large increase this year, it's generally not the best practice to use free cash for non-one-time expenditures, but you could view it as somewhat a one-time expenditure because that increase was so large, while it's something we need to find a way to fund in the future.
But it's still going to be there next year.
It'll still be there next year. That's absolutely right. And, you know, maybe our new growth projections will come in higher, maybe our revenue, everything else could, could be better able to meet it. But I can't make that, that promise. So it's, it's something we can potentially be comfortable with, but if there's another way to, to get there, we might want to consider that.
I guess I have to say, and, you know, Ed, Ed's been around longer than me, but to only be sort of $100,000 out of balance, if you will, still in the month of March, is way better than we've been in years past.
Six hundred.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we would be at this point thinking, oh, my gosh, you know. So we, we're, we're pretty good at that.
Yep.
You know, making that work. And so to only be $100,000 out of balance is actually kind of remarkable to me. You know, the last few years have been.
And we sometimes.
Been much bleaker.
Sometimes there's one-time expenditures we can use free cash for that come up part of that budget, maybe, maybe not. But I haven't seen what you've guys have seen, so.
Yeah.
It's when we really start putting our heads together that we're able to sometimes find those.
The plan is to do that on, on the 8th, just, just spend the time in a joint meeting with the finance committee, really going through everything. I'll be ready then to do that. I've gone through line, item by line item in the general fund and, you know, given plenty of departments haircut for some of the, the items they've asked for, where it doesn't seem they're spending expenditures in the past years. I don't think it's anything that they can't live with, but I will be going through it with each of the department heads to make sure they're comfortable with that.
Does that include COLAs?
COLAs are already mapped out as a certain percentage right now at the guidance of the, the finance committee.
And the $100,000 is with the COLAs built in?
With a COLA of 2.5% at the moment.
Okay, so that's.
And that has been planned, thinking that that's where the school negotiation is going to land, that teachers will have a 2.5% increase. It's possible that will be 2.7%. If that's the case, we could still add that into, into the COLAs for all, all staff, 2.7%. Point seven versus point five would be about like a $7,000 difference.
Was the contract completed with the schools?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. So that's still another unknown factor, right?
Yeah.
Very close, though.
David, did you have something?
Yeah, just, I mean, we've had a couple of meetings, finance committee, ourselves with Andrew, and been looking at the spreadsheets and things. Just a comment on the, on the health insurance piece. The way, the way Sean brought this up the other night, the way you looked at it is, is trying to take that big chunk and move it over two years versus over paying it all at once. That's why the suggestion is to move that $100,000 from free cash. Since we do have a fairly significant amount of free cash this year, more than we normally would have, which is a way to just sort of ease the burden just a little bit and not have that big huge hit for, for the first year. Yes, it's going to be there next year, but at least, you know, we're, we get a little bit more time. And I think that just, you know, Andrew's done a great job of putting the workbooks together and us being able to take a look and see all the different lines. And a lot of our discussion is, is same with discussion that we had with capital is, what are we going to do with all these projects? You know, are we going to look at debt exclusions? Are we going to look at overrides? Are we going to look at both? And it's time to really think about how we're going to try to fund all those projects. That, I just want to say, hopefully next two weeks from now, when we have that meeting on the 8th, that we're ready to think about what those, what those options are going to be and make some decisions as to how we're going to go forward with trying to fund some of that stuff.
Yeah, because we're really, there's not much time, you know, in terms of getting ready.
April 15 is the deadline, right?
Yeah.
For ballot questions.
It's a ballot question. So really, the 8th is our opportunity, because then you give your seven days to put the questions together. And then you got to sign the warrant on, what, the 29th of April?
Yes.
So, you know, we're, we're a month away from signing the warrant.
I know, it's, it's all, we're short.
Okay. But you're right, we're, we're really close. I don't think it's going to take a lot to, to bridge that $100,000 gap. But I think the bigger questions are what we're going to, what we're going to do with some of the big capital items that we really need to.
Oh, it's a whole discussion.
Yep.
Absolutely.
The whole, the whole thing.
Yeah. So if I were to frame it, I'd say be ready on, on April 8th tonight. Whatever research or anything else you need from me, whatever I can do to frame this best, I'm happy to do. We need to talk about potential debt exclusion or other funding for the must-do projects that capital presented tonight. So it's the boilers, parking lots, happy elementary school roof, and any remaining capital projects we think are, need to be front of mind. We have this outstanding question about the request from the fire department to move to 24/7 services that would, I believe, require, it would require an override. We can talk about if we think it's, it's something we'd want to recommend moving forward with. There's this question of, of health insurance. The schools have put forward a 2.5% increase. That'll be up to the finance committee to decide how to move forward with that. It's a question of COLAs, we'll need to be ready to discuss. And then there are some raises for specific employees that were asked for. A couple of those are elected officials or accountable to other boards, so it's a finance committee discussion. But we will be talking about the treasurer's contract and COA director had asked for a larger raise than the one in there, so. And then use of free cash potentially for snow and ice for last year, which I think will be needed, potentially to balance the budget this year, potentially for stabilization accounts, and potentially for removing some debt that we have. It's a higher-than-average free cash number this year, so using it to pay down some debt could be something we thank ourselves for in the future. And I'll be double-checking our, our debt payments. There's a significant amount of debt that's in there and most of it through debt exclusion, so there's a funding source for it already, but it is a lot of debt that we need to pay this year. So that's what I'll say on budget.
Besides that, piece of cake.
Listen, I'll tell, you know, it's been an easier year, right, than, I mean, we, we had some, you know, I've had tougher years, much tougher years. Both my, you know, on before and, you know, honestly, some of the times during COVID, you know, we had all that ARPA money, there was, you know, we had a lot of leeway. But we'll get through it. Listen, we will get through it.
Speaking of the ARPA money, I think you're seeing a lot of places that are having these issues with school budgets and other kinds of things. My impression is they use a lot of that ARPA money to fund positions.
Yep.
And now that that ARPA money's not there anymore.
Yeah.
They, they, now they got to come up with their own funding. And one of the things which you guys should be patting on the back was, you didn't spend it on positions, you spent it on other stuff that, that was a one-time deal versus something that's recurring.
We did not use it to increase the budget spend.
Increase benefit packages and all those kinds of things where you're looking at, you know, some of those cities and towns that are having issues with their school budgets. The difference between what the town wants to pay and what they, they want.
And there's quite a few this year.
There's a whole lot of them.
There's quite a few this year.
They funded a bunch of positions with money that, with grant money. Now that grant money's dried up and now they don't have the, the town money to pay for.
So not only we didn't build ARPA funds into our regular operating budget, but we actually used the ARPA funds to clean up all kinds of things that were on our capital plan. So we, we really made the best decisions possible to position ourselves right now to not be even worse off. So, you know, there was so many little projects and, you know, that were just great uses of that ARPA fund, capital, capital thing, so.
They've been deferred for many years.
In some cases, in most cases, yeah. I mean, most things that we take care of capital-wise, sit around for a little while before we get to them. Nothing really comes up and gets funded, you know? So, unless it's an emergency. So, so those were things we did that I'm glad we did during those years that we had ARPA money. Okay, um, are you good with that?
So that's budget.
That's budget.
Warrant, I plan to have a draft warrant for you on April 8th as well. So we'll just be ready to go through that. Most of them are pro forma, sorts of foreign articles. There's a couple that are more policy-related that we can just either do or not do based on if we'll be, be ready for this meeting.
Do we have any, anything submitted by the planning board, the zoning board yet?
Yep. Planning board has their ADU bylaw. So the updated ADU bylaw is done, ready to go, looks good. And it's been vetted by town council, it complies with the state requirements, makes the necessary changes that we need to comply with the state. So that's the big one.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's going to be a big meeting on the 8th. That's all right.
We'll keep it clear of other things.
Great. Thanks, Dave.
Good.
Okay, so topic 10, are we ready to move on to topic 10? Which is authorize sewer and water billing, FY '25 commitment number two for collection?
Yes, I think we should move there.
Did you want to speak to it or?
So Patty actually spearheaded most of the water sewer billing. She's been working pretty diligently with Tony to clear up a lot of issues that we're having. She's still working with him. We do have a lot of like ZRO reads and stuff, so they are going forward to try to fix some of this stuff after this billing. But we did get the billing out and it is ready to go. It is lower than expected, even though rates did go up, so we didn't have as much usage as last year with the entire commitment for spring at $613,761.38 for water and sewer.
I wonder what's the, I mean, we did have like the drought and water bans, so maybe some of that, I don't know. Okay. Any questions, Ed?
No, I mean, we, also, we've been discussing for years the fact that each year we might have to go on a small increase for water and sewer instead of waiting, holding it off for three years and then hitting people with a big increase. So, I mean, we, we really do have to put in planning within our budgets for the next 20 years that each year we're going to do a little bit increase to help offset these costs. And I also, as far as we're on water, I think we do need to sit down with Tony and find out what issues he's having as a board and, and make sure that our regulations that are in the DPW regulations are being used so that he can get this stuff fixed.
They did discuss.
This is regarding water meters.
Yes, so they did discuss going over new regulations and all of that.
And, and to your point about rates and everything, so the rates have already been set. This is nothing changing with the rates, this is just the commitment.
That is correct.
It's just that people conserved a little bit more because their rates went up last time.
Yeah, and I mean, and, and really, we weren't, you know, there was a drought, there were, you weren't supposed to be, weren't there water bans, not, you know, so.
And I, I think the town has also understand there's, there's things we have no control over. We, we still have to run the pumps, we still have to pay for increases in electricity, we still have to pay for increases in other costs. And that just goes, just.
Right.
Just one of those things. So you need a motion on this?
Yes.
Is that what we need?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer billing FY '25 commitment number two for collection in a total of $613,000. $761.38.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you said those bills already went out?